Lift off. Call this school committee meeting to order August 10th, 2020. Mr. Stevens, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. One nation, indivisibility, and justice for all.
Thank you. Are we superintendent, are we launching right into the public comment phase or we've got, oh, let's go according to the agenda?
Yeah.
Approval of the minutes from the previous school committee of June 15th, 2020?
Make a motion, approve them.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of 20 June 15th, 2020. Roll call, vote on this, please. Ms. Greenlee's.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Craigin?
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
Are we doing?
And I'm a yes.
I'm so sorry, Mayor Dean Natale.
Yes. All right. So that's a unanimous on the minutes of June 15, 2020. Moving on, approval of the minutes from the previous school committee of July 29th, 2020?
Make a motion, we approve them.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded to approve. School committee meeting minutes of July 29th, 2020. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Greenlee's once again.
Yes, sir, Mayor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Craigin? Ms. Craigin?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
We are unanimous?
Unanimous, thank you. Moving on. Superintendent, I don't believe there are any communications tonight. Well, there will be certainly from you. But we want to move into the public comment phase at this time.
Right.
And let me just in the spirit of being informative here. The folks that are seeking to make comment today, there will, there is no, there is no dialogue going back and forth. So your, your position is going to be stated and we'll be moving on to the next person and so on down the line. So there is no, there is no debate in this, in this aspect of the, of the agenda. So without further ado. I'll start with the first name. Ms. Kathy Davis? Is Ms. Davis on? On the call?
She is not in attendance, sir.
Okay. I will state what she has written, vote hybrid AM PM model. If the district does decide all remote, will this decision be revisited at the half year mark? That's, that's her statement. Uh, moving on Francine Reyes. Seeing none, will students?
Francine, can you unmute your microphone, please?
Oh, is she, is she on? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can you remind people that there is a three minute limit on the public comment?
Okay. Yes. Ms. Reyes?
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. My main concern and question that I do have is that in my family, we live with a person of a major high risk, open heart surgery, diabetes and high blood pressure. So my main question was, are the students who have family members?
Did we lose her, folks?
I think we did.
Superintendent, you keeping track of some of these questions? I think we would need to.
I'm writing down the comments. The questions that are coming up.
Yeah, to respond when you do your presentation. Yeah, okay. Ms. Reyes, is she still there or?
She has left the call.
She has. All right. Uh, next Patty Clash. Patty Clash, is she on the, she on the call?
Yes, please unmute your microphone, Patty.
Patty, you there? Okay, let's move on. What the, the question that she has provided is what is the start date for kindergarten children? All right, moving on, I, I am. I'm gonna, I'm gonna really mispronounce this last name's person's last, Frances Oewek, Wetch, Awek? Is she? Waiting to speak?
They're on the call, they just need to unmute their microphone.
Is she on this call? Or he or she?
All of your questions have been answered.
Is she on this call? Or he or she?
Frances, please mute your television at home. And then unmute your microphone to this call. Sorry, the question I had has already been answered.
Okay. Make full remote an option, no matter which model is chosen.
About remote learning.
Okay. Yeah, about remote learning.
All right. All set? Okay, moving on. Mr. Glenn Fossa.
Not present.
Not present. Mr. Fossa asks. We support the decision to reopen schools in a safe way. We also support creative ideas that make use of our current resources. Next. Jennifer Dumas.
Not present at this time.
Her statement, make full remote learning an option, no matter which model is chosen. Next, Ms. Jessica Walters.
She is here.
Okay.
Hello, Jessica?
Okay. Her question, are students who have 504 included in cohort C? Moving on, Mr. Thomas Hughes.
He is here.
Okay.
Please unmute your microphone.
Am I all set?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Hey, Tom.
How are you?
Good. Your, your statement, Tom?
I'm sorry?
You, you, the statement you wanted to make?
Uh, yeah, I was, I guess my, my statement was, I didn't know if there was a plan in place in terms of utilizing maybe community based pods.
Okay. That, that complete your statement, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, Patricia Evans.
Not present.
Her question, looking to know how will the kids be separated and how many kids will be per classroom? Uh, moving on, Lindsey, Lindsey Radziewicz. Uh, no question, no question anyway. Uh. No question from Marlenei Adalarama. Eve Rivera.
Not present.
Needs to know the final decision for schools, so that's, that's a given. Ashley Tonelli.
Not present.
Her question is, in order for staff and students to safely return to school in person, I will be assured that I will have the necessary PPE. Next, Amanda Norris.
Not present.
Her question, I'm hoping that we start the year out fully remote and reassess after the first few months. Uh, Rachel Ship.
Rachel, please unmute your microphone?
I'm sorry?
Rachel? She is here?
I'm sorry, I did not have a public comment. I apologize.
Did you want to, did you want to speak now, Ms. Ship? It's fine if you do.
I am all set. Thank you so much.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you. Shara Osgood.
Standby.
Um, yeah, I had just wanted to voice my opinion, which is reflected by other people already, that we should definitely be starting the year completely remote and reassess as we go. And if we are needing to open schools in order to get funding from the government or whatever, that we should have a remote option available for those who are at high risk and unable to be there.
Mr. Mayor, you're on mute.
Okay. Nathan, is she there?
Next to speak is Lauren.
Yeah, Lauren Mountain. She has no, no statement submitted.
I don't have any statements at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose Morse. Again, no statement. Is she present?
Not present.
Okay. Lenaya Thomas, no statement?
She is here?
Okay.
Hi, good evening. No, I don't have a statement at this time.
Thank you. Tabitha Greenlee's.
Standby.
I'm only here as a member of the bargaining committee if there are questions that need to be asked.
Thank you. And finally Christine Saladini.
Not present.
Her statement, as a Pittsburgh public school teacher, I am very interested in hearing what the committee had to say in regards to opening. And that completes the public comment section of the agenda. Anyone else out there, Nathan, that we, we would welcome a comment from?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. According to the agenda, we move on to the superintendent's report. And school calendar. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have two items for discussion under the superintendent's report. One is this coming school year's calendar. If you remember, in the spring, the school committee did approve a calendar. There is a need to change the school start date on that calendar. Primarily as a result of a state level agreement between the Department of Ed and the Massachusetts Teachers Association, who represents teachers here in Pittsburgh. The first 10 school days will now be for professional development of staff in regards to health and safety training and in regards to the learning model that we will be undertaking for this coming school year. So those teacher workshop or professional development days would be August 26th, 27th, 31th, and in September, the first, second, third, eighth, ninth, 10th, and 11th, with school starting on September 14th. Uh, we have other professional days scheduled throughout the year. Uh, one on October 13th, March 8th, and June 14th and 15th. We have shared this calendar with the teachers' union. We have conferred with them. The only caveat we have to the calendar in conversations with the teachers' union is the last two days. Uh, depending on how this year goes, we may reschedule those two dates. So we're holding those two dates tentatively at the end of the year and that may change. But the remainder of the calendar as shared with you is for school committee vote.
Yeah, one other thing, just to add. Um, we also had early release days for professional development this year. We actually removed all the early release days from our calendar for professional development. And the last day of school now will be on Friday, June 11th, which will be the 170th day of school, which is now required for the school year instead of 180 days.
Do you think it, Mayor, it's mentioning for parents watching or any other community members watching that this is happening in every district? Because of the change in, at the state level from 180 school days to 170, reflecting really the need for professional development, I think might just help for everybody to know that this is kind of statewide.
Right, that's, that's absolutely right. Dean, uh, this is a statewide agreement and, uh, as all calendars are voted locally, they just, this is just part of the process to get the, uh, the local approval here, but that is exactly right. That is, this is happening statewide.
So can I make a motion to approve that calendar or?
Please.
All right, motion to approve the new calendar.
Second.
Second.
And seconded to approve the 2020, 2021 school calendar. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Greenlee's.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Craigin?
Hi.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
We are unanimous?
Thank you, committee members. Moving on. Uh, to really, uh, the, the hallmark of why we're here this evening, final district reopening plans. Superintendent Jokola, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, tonight, uh, we're presenting to you the, the work that we've done over the last few months, looking at all the options, uh, what our recommendation is after considering a lot of the factors involved. This, uh, presentation tonight builds on the presentation that we presented on July 29th. Uh, it also includes, um, item information that I presented community, uh, last Thursday evening. And it also includes, uh, current information since then. So with that as a introduction, I'm going to, uh, share my screen. Um, members of central office team are available. Um, and I will be switching off to other members. Of central office team will be a, a group presentation, but I will be getting it started, so. Without further ado, here we go. So, again, to start off with, um, everyone should, uh, understand that tonight's, uh, proposed plan is a draft. As negotiations are underway with several, uh, unions, uh, within the school department and that we, um, school, as the agents of the school committee, uh, and the school committee will be abiding by master general law, chapter 150E, uh, and all sections beginning there too. Uh, we also have additional negotiations with external vendors, which may be necessary. And their outcome and impact are unknown at this time. While the chapter 70 funds, 70 funding amounts communicated to Pittsburgh, uh, it remains unknown the potential economic impact on total funding posed by any changes in COVID-19 spread, actual state, federal, or local revenue to fund public education. So, as we get started, our primary concern, our values are the health and safety of our staff, students, and families of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Public Schools community. Our goal is to meet the learning needs and social emotional needs of all our students. As we plan a return to school for this upcoming school year, we want to create a culture of awareness and responsibility. So as we look at the guidance that's been shared with us from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, if staff or students feel ill or that they may be symptomatic, the simplest advice is to stay home. There'll be, there'll be communication with the building administration, the principals, the nurse leader, and human resources uh, with regards to tracking, uh, students and staff's illness. Uh, we are in the process of preparing a COVID-19 handbook for staff. Um, we do not have that ready yet, uh, but we are working on something. Uh, we will also be providing health and hygiene training to staff and students as part of the, uh, professional development and ultimate back of students. And that we will be observing the physical distancing throughout buildings. And while originally we were asked by, uh, the Department of Ed to look at three feet and six feet physical distancing scenarios in terms of desks, uh, tonight's presentation focuses solely on the six feet of physical distance. You know, as we deliberated, um, next steps of reopening, it was important for us to look at who our students are, the needs of our students. Um, this slide summarizes our student profile and compares it to the profile of the state. Um, in Pittsburgh, our students with disabilities comprises nearly 24% of our student population. And our English language learners are 16.1%. Uh, one thing that we've seen, uh, as during this pandemic and the results on students and education, uh, we need to meet the needs of all students. While students in, in Pittsburgh and school districts across the country out of a sense of, or really because of the emergency nature of the coronavirus crisis back in the spring went to remote learning, everyone acknowledges it wasn't perfect. And we learned as we went along, the remote learning or the remote learning component, uh, that we'll talk about tonight will be different. Going back to where we're at today and the timeline over the next couple of weeks. Back on July 29th, we shared with you the preliminary plan. As part of that plan that we submitted to the Department of Ed, we had to, uh, inform the community how we were viewing a full return of in-person learning, uh, continued remote learning, and then also a hybrid model. Now, this Friday, the detailed plan or final plan, uh, as the Desi Department of Ed calls it, is due. Uh, again, I will continue to call that the proposed, uh, final reopening plan, given the ongoing negotiations. Uh, going back to the school calendar. Going back to the school calendar, staff would return for training on August 26th, and school would begin on August 31st from a Actually, that date is.
That's actually incorrect. September 15th.
September 15th.
I'm sorry, September 14th, excuse me.
So as we look at the return to school, it was really important for us to look at a lot of different factors as we weighed this important decision on which model to recommend to the school committee and to the community. While I'm not going to go through each one in detail, I want to just go over each, each topic at a high level. You know, the loss of learning of our students in Fitchburg and across the country is, is a major concern. Also, the social emotional impact of not being in school is a major, you know, was a major factor in our recommendation tonight. Again, we have spoken with DCF in terms of finding out what's happening in the community, and again, from a school perspective, there could be a reduced detection of child abuse. Also, the nutritional insecurity. As I'd formed the school committee at the end of the last school year, how many hundreds of, you know, we served over 100,000 meals in terms of our drive, you know, drive up pickup model. You know, we believe that while we were able to service a lot of families, not everyone was serviced. You know, just looking at the employment news, as we, we all see, the, the many employers have been, have had to close because of the non-essential classification of businesses. Some didn't, haven't reopened yet. Some haven't brought all workers back yet. Many of those workers are, are students' parents. That was also a factor in our deliberations. And lastly, just lack of essential services. As we talk about, you know, one of the questions raised with students on 504s, but also those on individual education plans. We are the service provider for many of our students. So all these factors combined influenced our recommendation to you tonight. And I should add, although I can't see it because of the Zoom bar, is this slide was from Adrian Labs, which was, or which is a think tank partnership from Brigham and Women's Hospital and the Harvard T.H. Chan School of Public Health. So as we consider the, consider, look at the factors for reopening, you know, first and foremost is what is the status of the pandemic in our community and in our state? Also, what's the feasibility of each of the options at any given time? Next, the availability of the personal protective equipment, otherwise known as PPE. Also, transportation, availability, logistics, and as mentioned earlier, ongoing negotiations. Next couple of slides are really just a summary of where the, the status of the pandemic. This slide is from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health as of Saturday, August 8th. I don't know, Nate, if you have Steve Curry available?
Yes, he's in the meeting.
Okay. Steve, if you have any comments on this slide?
Sure, can you folks see me okay?
Yes.
So as you can see, the public health indicators, the state has been hovering around 2%, and basically that 2% is the positivity per 100,000 people. So you'll see the numbers at the top are averaging right around 2%. Fitchburg currently has had 833 cases since March 1st. Currently, however, we only have 13 active cases. So Fitchburg is at a 1.38 positivity. So as compared to the state, we're half a percentage for the better, so to speak.
Steve, if you can just stay on the line, I'm going to advance the slide deck here.
Absolutely. So that's, that's sort of the right, excuse me, the red is, is an idea of positivity where Fitchburg stands. You'll see quite the drop off in the beginning of July. We started off at 14.28% and now we're roughly around 1.38%. This slide shows you the number of cases on a weekly basis of what Fitchburg experienced since March 1st. As of this slide making, it was 824, now it's 833. We've averaged about in the last two weeks, 14 cases, which is a little bit more than it has been in the last few weeks, but it's still reasonable numbers that aren't as overwhelming as it was in April. Incidentally, Worcester County is also as a whole been averaging about 30 to 40 cases, the entire county since around July, which is interesting to look at as compared to the cities and towns that surround Boston. There, that, that, those counties are experiencing much heavier caseloads for COVID.
Eve, could I ask a question? This is.
Sure can.
This is Gene. Do you have demographic information on who, on those infections? Do you have age? Do you have like, do you know anything about contact tracing about those?
I don't have them as of yet, but I am working with the Monmouth City Regional Public, I'm sorry, Planning Commission, and I hope to have those very shortly.
Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. I have a couple more slides in regards to the health, and really, this is comparison. So looking at the next two slides are from information from John Hopkins. So the numbers as a state might be just a little different than what Steve Curry or DPH is using, but I think probably the concept is pretty close. So here's a list of the, I think, 13 or 14 states that test below the 5% threshold that the World Health Organization recommends for students to return to school. So you can see just from this table that Vermont has a half a percent, and you know, Massachusetts, based on John Hopkins data, is at 3.63%. And again, the Fitchburg positivity test percentage for the last 14 days was 1.38% based on most recent data.
Excuse me, ma'am, I have a question. May I ask? That's, may I ask? Hello?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I waited to be recognized. That's those percentages are the people that contracted the disease, tested positive. How about the deaths, the number of deaths?
So I can take a stab at that. In the city, as of today, we've had a total of 76 deaths. Most of those have been attributed to long-term care facilities. On the state level, the state level is around 8,500 deaths statewide.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And another way to look at the data, again, this is from John Hopkins, and this tries to take a data and put it into a more graphical interface with green, the states in green being the states below 5%. States in yellow, 5 to 10%, and the other colors, 10% or more. So when we look at Massachusetts and most of New England, except Rhode Island, we're all in the below 5% category based on the most recent data. Okay, so Steve, that's, that's it for the presentation portion, unless you want to just hang around until the end. If the school committee members have any questions for you at that point.
Sure, I'll hang around.
Okay, thank you. So going back to our original charter of how do we, how do we begin to look at what, what options are possible? One of the first matters that we looked at was just the, you know, physical capacity of our schools under a three-foot physical distancing scenario of the desks, and then a six-foot physical distancing of the desks, students in the desks. So this is information that was presented to the school committee on July 29th, but I wanted to include it here again. Again, to show what the, what the differences are under each scenario, green being possible, red being not possible. So under a six-foot physical distancing scenario, the only school that can accommodate that would be Goodrich Academy, our alternative high school. None of our other schools at this point with six foot of physical distancing could accommodate a full student body return to our classrooms. So we compared that against the current enrollment and looked at what our shortfall by school was. And the schools with the largest amount of shortfall were Rhine Gold, Memorial, Crocker, and we don't have the, the final numbers on Fitchburg High yet. Looking at what does this look like? This, this slide just shows a picture of the six-foot physical class spacing per Department of Elementary-Secondary Education and CDC guidelines. Again, a repeat slide from the July 29th presentation. At this point, I'm going to turn the mic over to Craig Shalfo to talk about what steps and what factors we are looking at in terms of cleaning, disinfecting, PPE procurement, and all those matters. So Craig, the mic is yours, and I'll advance the slides.
Thanks, Bob. So again, just to reiterate something that the superintendent had mentioned at the beginning of his presentation is building this culture of awareness and responsibility, and that is something that all of us, the entire school community, will have to take into consideration, particularly when we're looking at the importance of physical distancing, we're looking at the importance of health and hygiene, and wearing masks, and what our own responsibilities are as individuals within our classrooms, within our school buildings, and with our family members as well. So just to kind of preface the cleaning and disinfecting under the model, kind of a phase in model that we're looking at with staff returning first and then small groups after that, and, and under a hybrid model of a shorter day with fewer students in the classrooms. Well, we've been looking at different training on how to train our staff, how to train our maintenance staff, our teachers as they return to school. We have some documents, two documents now that we have shared with union leadership and school committee, I believe, that are drafts that we're continuing to work on, and as the superintendent had mentioned, also a larger handbook, which would then include much of the guidelines presented through the Department of Ed in coordination with the CDC. So looking at what we are doing for cleaning and disinfecting routines on a daily matter, also on an hourly, as we look at having smaller groups of students coming into the buildings, what does that look like? And who would be responsible for what? And these are critically laid out, and again, they're kind of work in progress. Each building may be slightly different, and depending on the developmental levels of the children, we may have to adapt some of these procedures within the classrooms as well. Obviously, high school and middle-aged students might be able to help more than, than younger children as well. So looking at what we're doing in our buildings and how we're doing that, and what type of training we're providing for all of our staff members. As far, and I know much has been discussed around HVAC systems and ventilation systems, we have contracted with Gale Associates, it's an engineering firm, to come out and do a full evaluation on all of our buildings to give us real data on their functionality at this point, and then looking at benchmarks provided by the state, which are somewhat moving targets right now, but as we introduce a greater density of people into our buildings and our classrooms, what are the expectations for providing fresh air? And what is the best way that we can do that based on the age of our buildings and the operability of our systems? And again, looking at building management will be critically important, working with individual principals and how will groups be grouped in cohorts of students? Obviously, we're looking at students would remain in a small group of together, and then teachers would be actually moving from classroom to classroom, which would decrease the amount of traffic that we would see in our hallways, and this would, again, would vary from building to building in age levels as well. And then looking at what our classroom furniture is and what we would need to do to accommodate reintroducing students into our classrooms. And finally, just a little bit around the importance of health and hygiene around hand washing and making sure that the supplies for doing these things are available to our staff, available to our maintenance staff, obviously, into our students and meeting the needs of all. So these are all pieces to part of our reentry plan. We'll go into a little bit more detail as we go on to the next slides. I don't know if you have questions thus far, or I can keep going.
Well, do you prefer questions now, or do you want to wait till the end?
Well, maybe we can get through the next couple of slides, and then it may answer some of the questions you may have. Some of this we've discussed in previous meetings, particularly around personal protective gear and equipment, its availability, what we've done around purchasing it, and what we're looking at for providing to staff and for students and for transportation and for buses and for vans. So something that I've mentioned in the past around the state contracts, you know, we've heard of districts or folks going outside of state contracts and receiving equipment and receiving materials that were substandard. So everything that we're purchasing is being purchased through state contracts with vendors that we are familiar with and with suppliers that will be providing us with what we're actually trying to purchase.
Craig, this to Mayor, right? I had a conversation with Mary Delaney, the Chief Procurement Officer, and she's she's assured me she's on top of this whole process and
Absolutely. Mary has been critically important in advising us and providing guidance to the business office for procuring particular equipment, and not only that, but also verifying that we're using supplies that are actually providing with us with the equipment that we should be purchasing.
Right.
You know, the supply lines, the chains, the lead time on some items tend to be somewhat inconsistent. Our original purchase, which I will go through in just a moment, the majority of the items were, had about a three to five day lead time, with some of the, some of the other items, and I'll discuss it with a three to four week lead time. So, and that changes unfortunately somewhat daily, but I was literally on the loading dock this morning, counting boxes and seeing equipment as it was coming through the door. So the orders for, and I feel very confident that the initial orders for our personal protective equipment that we will need to provide to all staff members and students will be in district in a time for us to begin a hybrid model.
I do have a question.
Yes, Ms. Reynolds.
Okay, thank you for recognizing me. The PPE, is there any variety of mask? Is the mask or shield okay for students? Do they have the option?
Masks are mandatory. A shield would be worn in conjunction with a mask and not to replace. I know in some instances, individuals may have reasons why they're not able to wear masks, and we will have to work with the individuals to come up, to have a plan in place. Then the shield would be the next best option.
Right, because I, as I understand the law, people that have reasons not to wear the mask do not have to wear a mask.
Correct, and that would be accommodated.
Okay. Okay.
Yep. Bob, if you want to move on to the next slide. So again, just tracing back a little bit to our, the ventilation systems and HVAC, this is just a, a quick summary of some of the work that has been done, that we've been working with DPH to complete air quality tests around the district. We've already completed several, we have others to be completed. And we also have a member of staff that's very familiar with our district, that's been doing in-district testing for many, many years, that's very familiar with our buildings. Part of my goal is to have him work alongside our contracted engineers to present us with findings, to increase and give us a strategy for me, making sure that we are providing the greatest amount of fresh air and the exhausting of that with the systems that we have. And, and I would rely on the, the experts to give us the plans for us to move forward in each building. And, and as I mentioned, each mechanical system in each building is, is slightly different depending on the age. And also just something that has come up, you know, we had invested after several issues at Fitchburg High School, Fitchburg High School being the newest of our buildings, over a hundred thousand dollars in, in different types of equipment upgrades, cleaning and so much over, over the past two years. You know, we've also have our contract, we have our local HVAC contractor right now doing the, kind of the summertime annual preventative maintenance routines that they would perform on all of our buildings. So that's ongoing as well and we can provide updates as we go. So this is just a, a quick overview of the first preliminary order of PPE that we have submitted. You can see it's totaling, I, I would say we're closer to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of PPE at this time. Just real quick, with, with just face shields that will be needed and we, our goal is to provide them for those staff who absolutely need them and anyone else who would prefer to wear them in conjunction with their mask as well. Looking at not only adult masks for staff, but students depending on their age, and the pediatric mask for our younger students. And also looking at the masks with the clear shield in front of the mouth so that folks who are actually learning to read and speak the language can, can kind of, can see the words being formed on the teacher's mouths. From disposable gowns, the thermometers, safety goggles. You know, we have had extensive conversations with what is the best way to provide antibacterial wipes. So we have some wipes, we have some spray solution with wipes that can be added. And then we have disposable buckets that you actually add the liquid to a bigger tub that gets absorbed into wipes that you can then continually refill on a nightly basis if necessary. Also providing privacy screens to nurses' offices. Excuse me.
We have, yes. Reimbursable through the state?
Yep, so part of, yes, so we have two grants right now. One is the relief grant, the coronavirus relief grant, that is for 1.26 million dollars, which will cover really getting our buildings prepared for the reopening. So we have money available there and then we have our CARES Act, which we move forward to FY21, which totals 1.8 million dollars as well. So we have roughly 3 million dollars that we're going to be using to not only support our staff, but also purchase the, the equipment necessary to reopen the buildings.
Good, thank you.
And, and Craig, back, back to that slide. Now, the, the complete total is just for how many weeks of school?
Yep, that's correct, John. So, you know, not knowing how we will consume some of these items, we are doing an initial first, an initial order first to find out exactly what we need. And you can see we've got 90,000 masks ordered and a number of those high-ticket items that we know that we'll be using. We estimated, estimated this to last us about 12 weeks. And again, that will depend on the, the model and it will depend on the number of students who are selecting to go fully remote versus the hybrid model. So leaving some flexibility there and actually speaking with other districts that if we needed to share PPE, we could possibly do that as well.
So Craig, I have a question and it's kind of a theory versus practice, right? It's like, so.
Yes.
I've gotten a couple, I, I mean, I'm sure all school committee members have gotten lots and lots of emails in the last few days. But a couple of them that struck me were comments about the reality in the classroom and classrooms where windows don't open or it takes, it takes two people to open that window and then it has to be propped up with a book. The question of like air filtration and there are rooms in all these buildings that don't have windows and access to windows. Questions about, it's often been parents who donate cleaning supplies because there aren't enough cleaning supplies in classrooms. And so how we, how would we give our assurance that all these classrooms really kind of have that, what they need? And then just the, the temperature that some school rooms reach, right? It can be 85 degrees sometimes and the masks have to be a non-negotiable if we're going to put kids in buildings. And I, I guess, and I know there's a new mask policy that's been initiated by MASC. And that's, but you know, we're talking like, again, theory versus practice, right? So you've got an 85-degree classroom. How do we envision all the great plans that you have put together and all the purchasing that we've done? How do we actually make it work in these older buildings?
Yep. So let me see if I can tackle all your questions one at a time. So just in response to the masks, you know, wearing mask is a non-negotiable. I know that we will be potentially working with some individuals that have a reason of particular medical reasons why they can't and we will work with them individually. I can't see that that being a large percent, but that's a, that's an unknown. So absolutely, but it is, you know, definitely a non-negotiable. You know, to speak to the, to the 85 degrees and, you know, spending a good chunk of my professional career at, in Long Island, and I, and I understand how the, the, you know, on those hot days, you know, really the only thing that we could do was open those windows. So we will have to work with school building maintenance to make sure that windows that are, that are not working are working. And if there are rooms where we cannot do that, then we would deem that room, you know, not occupied. So we would have to move that classroom elsewhere. So, you know, we have plans, we're aware of locations in some of our buildings where, you know, there are no windows and, and those would be areas that we would not be putting, putting students. If there are windows that are not operating, then, then we have to come up with a way to make sure that those windows are operating and operating safely. You know, I've, again, I've participated in a number of, of webinars and I'm not an expert in ventilation. And I will let the experts answer some of the specific questions to that. But as far as introducing fresh air in and exhausting it out, you know, is, is the critical piece to that. And, and I think that the, the folks working with us at DPH and with Gale Associates and their subcontractors were providing us in, in really good information about the evaluation, the age. You know, are the air handlers working at an optimum capacity to do what it needs to do? And then advising us what is the best way to introduce fresh air into a classroom and exhaust that out. So providing a steady stream of fresh air. Again, I, I'll leave that up to the engineers to, to help really coordinate that. And if that means we have to purchase a thousand fans, then, then we'll purchase a thousand fans. I'm not saying that that's a recommendation of theirs at this time, but certainly we're, we're ready to troubleshoot whatever the experts are telling us.
And Craig, when they're doing these audits, are they, are we assured that we've got a room-by-room assessment? It's not just an aggregate, it's like the individual rooms?
Yeah, yeah, so I can, I mean, as far as the HVAC systems, we, we did have Rhine Gold and Memorial. They performed some of this work already earlier in the summer. And, and yeah, it really is a matter of measuring the volume of air and the ability of the systems to exchange that. So they will, they will detail it down to, you know, and it, whether it's a room or a wing or a floor, you know, those are the specifics that we're, we're requesting from them and that we've included in the language of the contract.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Reynolds.
Do we have the mindset or could we please develop the mindset that I would personally not like to hear people commenting that we don't have this, we don't have that, we didn't have the mask? Could we have the mindset right ahead of time to ask our governor to provide what we cannot get if there's three or four week delays on delivery, our anticipated delays? And if he can't provide that, he asks the president to please provide it and do it quickly so that all's in place. You see what I'm saying?
I, I do and, and I, I think with the, the governor in his work with the, with the OSD or the state contracts has provided us, you know, the opportunity to purchase most, if not all of this equipment under state contracts with verified vendors. Again, I, I'm not finding that, that the, the ability to acquire this, the equipment and have it in district is, at this point, again, we're looking at, you know, the longest that I've seen of three weeks for lead times. So I feel comfortable that we can get in district what we need to get our hybrid model moving. And I would be the, be the first one to say that if we couldn't get a particular item, then we wouldn't be prepared to open at that time.
Or just ask quickly for the help that we, if we can't get it or if some, some contractor is delaying or not coming, stepping up as, as he contracted to do. Just quickly, quickly let the governor know what we need. And if he doesn't have it, let the president know what we need so that, just give us what we need now, you know? So that's, I'm asking, be done, yeah.
Yep, understood. Ms. LaBelle Pierce, I'm not sure if I answered all of your, all of your questions or?
You did, I, I have other ones for Steve Curry at some point, whenever there's a good chance for that. And then I just have questions that kind of probably aren't something fair to kind of ask you at this point, Craig, but that would just be issues that would kind of result from some of the stuff that we're talking about. So I can hold off on that. I guess we're assuming everybody's coming with their own masks, but those masks are there to, in case they don't have them. And I guess.
We're actually, we're actually anticipating that nobody is coming with masks and that we will be able to provide them if they have their own, which I'm assuming they will. But we've purchased enough that if, if folks showed up without masks, that we have plenty in this initial order to provide to them. We'll be supplying our transportation companies with masks. So if somebody tried to or attempted to board a bus in the morning and didn't have a mask, they would be readily available to them. Same thing in classrooms and, and putting, we have dispensers that can be placed in classrooms or in high-traffic areas that. I was in middle school enough to know, long enough to know that a student can leave a room with, with something and arrive at the next room and not have it. So we want to make sure that we have enough material for every classroom. So again, on this personal protective, and these are just, again, some of the highlights of what we are working on. If we go to the next slide, and it gives a little bit more, more specifics?
Before we do, I just want to mention to Jean and all the other school committee members that Pam Rivers is also available on tonight's meeting to answer any questions.
So just, you know, kind of personalizing what this would mean for, for our staff members. This is what we would anticipate being in a classroom upon arrival before students. So, and some of this is already here, we've been distributing the, the hand sanitizers, the one gallon pump bottles to classrooms. So in every classroom, there'll be, you know, a gallon hand sanitizer that's refillable and can be rejuvenated at night, disposable gloves, disposable masks, face shields. And again, some staff members will, will have to be required to wear them. And some of us have separate programs and, and others who would, would request them, we would make them available to them. And the same thing with disposable gowns, there'll be some that will be, we'll have to wear them and, and others, if they, you know, request them, we will, you know, purchase what we need for the disposable gowns. And we keep going back between disinfecting wipes and spray. I like the wipes because you're not spraying a bottle that becomes aerosolized and, and then, you know, inhaled. But we will have different types of disinfectant available to teachers, to students, if it's developmentally appropriate to wipe down a, a computer screen or wipe down a desk if necessary. We are working now with our custodians, we, we've actually piloted a little bit at South Street where we can, it's, it's probably better to put markings, we can literally paint markings right on top of the wax on our floors that can be then buffed off rather than putting down miles and miles of tape, which could eventually damage the, the tiles that they're actually attached to. So we're looking at, as we work with our principals of exactly what type of traffic flow, how are we going to socially distance, you know, a, a, an 11th grader versus a, a first grader? Each classroom, each office, each space occupied by an adult will have a foot-operated trash receptacle that would be received for rubber gloves, for any wipes that they would use, anything related, this, the disposable masks or anything from a classroom that then maintenance would be emptying as needed. You know, I would probably anticipate that being once a night. But if, if that requires more, then we would do that as well. And then plenty of, you know, the safety and the signage is critically important. We've got a, a number of professionally made samples that we can purchase if necessary. And we have a number of others that have been provided from the CDC and from the Department of Ed and from lots of other sources that we can download and make available to, to staff and, and students in multiple languages. I'm guessing as we, you know, my goal is to meet with a small working team. I mentioned this to union leadership to really look at this and they may have other ideas as well. You know, we're exploring the need to divide, many of our classes have tables and not desks. The goal would be to have one student per table, you know, which gives us, you know, up to about 15 students per class max. If we ever got to the point where we were increasing past a specific number, you know, we have the ability to divide those tables and, and we've explored options for dividing those tables in half with plexiglass. We've, we're looking at options for putting protective shields up around a teacher's desk if necessary. So there's other items that we're looking at and, and many vendors are coming, you know, to us with great ideas. And I, I should have maybe prefaced this at the beginning, a lot of the documents that we're using, you know, these are being shared amongst districts. You know, we get a strong group, not only here in Central Mass, but all over the state that are producing teacher handbooks that we're sharing with mandatory training, PowerPoint, that, that again, we can share from, take what's, what a best practice is so that we can really collaborate. So we're not working in isolation.
Another comment, that's the first time I heard about the shield around a teacher's desk, but I think it's a great idea. And I even thought of that myself around the, the children's in some, in some fashion, keeping one, one group from another, you know, like you see at the supermarket of things. However, the main thing I want to say right now is this, does this require, it sounds to me like it would require additional janitorial staff.
Yeah, so as the mayor had, had mentioned, Ms. Reynolds, we have that 3 million dollars in, in grant money just for this purpose. So we're looking at either the, the need to hire additional maintenance staff, hire additional nursing staff or, or staff to support the nurse. And I know that Ms. Rivers is on the line and can speak a little bit to that. We have money available to, whether we do stipends for. Uh, we have money available to, um, whether we do stipends for working groups. Um, that is definitely available. And again, whether we're actually providing overtime for staff. And or the, the need for additional staff, um, that's yet to be determined. So I, I would. At least hypothesize that if we have half the students in, in classrooms. For half the amount of time that they typically are, that based on what we have in district for maintenance staff that we can. Do the amount of disinfecting that we need to do during the day on an ongoing basis. As well as during the evenings to prepare for the next day. If we find that that's not accurate, then we're ready to either increase time or increase personnel.
Okay, because there's, it can, it can be a problem how well the staff does actually perform its work. Yeah, okay.
Pam, I don't, I don't know if you had um, anything to add a- along those lines of supporting our, our medical staff.
No, I think you outlined it beautifully. We, we're looking at, um, again, it's been shared this evening. Different models, um, looking at different districts and the needs. We certainly are looking to um. Have safety and the, the health needs ever present. And that includes following the guidelines that have the nurses within the health rooms for care. Um, we were following along with the isolation rooms, the needs around that and, and what that's going to look like. Um, based on the guidelines, based on other um, information, particularly, you know, from our DPH School Health Unit. That is advising across the state. So more to come, but we're certainly looking at everything that we have on hand. And um, making the, the safest um. Environment possible.
Thank you, Pam. And you know, critically important to this whole process is being able to do the amount of cleaning and disinfecting necessary. And making sure that we're able to meet the guidelines around physical distancing from wearing masks. Um, in, in washing our hands and doing all the, the, I say the little things, they're not so little, they're really critically to minimizing. The spread of this virus.
Just on that note, again, like theory versus practice, right? So if you're looking at a typical bathroom and a pool and. My familiarity is obviously more of high schools. Um, you've got a lot of kids in the bathroom. And um, a lot of things have gone on in bathrooms that we haven't been able to curtail, like vaping, right? Um, and so what I, I would imagine, but I hadn't seen it. What the plans are to ensure that it's maybe just one person in the bathroom, that the flow. You know, entrance and exit are controlled and you don't have people like right in each other's faces there. And, and again, like we're talking about kids, right? So the reality is that um, this is going to be extremely different. Than what a lot of ki- than what is natural for kids. And a lot of kids. Who have not been back to school, right? Like they, they've gone back to a lot of um, mixing with each other and. So there's basically, a- again, it's sort of the theory and practice. So how do we ensure that those bathrooms are going to be safe? That they're going to be clean from, I guess you said an hourly basis, right? Um, is that what you were saying? You said something about an hourly cleaning schedule.
Under the, under the guides that we have in a four hour day, they would probably be done if not hourly, at least at the midpoint of that four hours. Um, and then with somebody else walking around, you know, doing continually doing um, spraying of high touch areas. Wiping down handles, you know, the foggers that we're looking to deploy can basically disinfect the bathroom in about 10 minutes. Um, so you could go in, you could shut it and you could do this on a rotating basis. You kind of lock it. Uh, this fog it, walk out, lock it and within 10 minutes, it's, it's completely disinfected.
Can add to this, you know, we're talking about at the most, uh, fifty percent of the kids in the building. And then with, uh, hopefully we'll be able to send breakfast home the day before and students will be taking lunch. And, and bringing home with them. So with, with not eating in school and then half the kids, the, the use of the bathrooms will drop significantly also.
Excuse me, uh, Gene, I think that's a, a very important point. And uh, I've seen that during testing when. Um, state testing, when students weren't allowed to speak to each other and they'd be somebody at the bathroom entrance allowing. Only one to go in at a time and one out. It worked beautifully, beautifully. So I'd suggest uh, uh, somebody be stationed to monitor. At the bathrooms to allow only one in and one out at a time.
I, I mean, again, you know, th- these are, we've never attempted this in the past, this, you know, we are. Um, gonna run into things as we go. I think we're being thoughtful, very thoughtful right now in our phase in approach to this. Um, with, with. The planning uh, in, in having the, the, uh, the building principals really look at their, the layout of their building and how they would do. An arrival and dismissal and mask breaks in class exchanges and so on and so forth. Use of outside um, areas. So just looking at busing and again, this is something that we've discussed in the past, you know. We've contracted with for a student, I believe, a, a minimum of seventy-two um, person buses. So using this model here, you know, we can look at, you know, twenty-three students per bus. Um, you know, theoretically, again, theory versus practice, uh, we'll have to be very thoughtful. I've already spoke with Ms. Hildreth to really look at um, locations uh, of, of bus stops that are typically more. Uh, dense or frequented than others. We, we know that we have bus routes that may contain ten or twelve students. And we have others that historically been up to forty-five or fifty. So as we look at our cohorts of groupings, we may have, actually have to look at what. Um, cohorts of, of students are coming from particular neighborhoods so that we can make sure that we are able to provide transportation. Uh, for the, for the correct amount, keeping under the guidelines presented by the Department of Ed for transportation. Uh, for both our big buses and for our vans and our special education and district buses. So this is just. An, an example of how to physically distance on the vans and what that does to our. Ability to transport students. Uh, and again, looking very closely at uh, the use of vans versus mini buses. Which you would be able to fit more. Um, our, our transportation contract is up and it's out to bid. Um, I, I know that under the uh, former contract that, that they were able or going to be able to provide mini buses. Um, as opposed to vans if we uh, wanted to go that route. So much of this is very tailored to. Which students go to which schools and um, and where they live in what neighborhood. So, you know. I know that Donna Hill just puts a lot of thought into how to not only transport kids safely, but how do we get them from certain neighborhoods to schools? Um, which is a, which will be another critical planning point for us.
Hey Craig, thanks for uh, going all over a lot of the feasibility issues and uh. We'll take some more questions at the conclusion of the presentation. So going back to uh, surveying both staff and students. We wanted to get input. Uh, about a month or so ago, we interviewed uh, approximately, well, we sent out a survey. To about thirty-three or thirty-four hundred parents. Uh, their responses are in the um. You know, what color blended uh, cream or dark cream color here and. Uh, we had about fifteen hundred responses uh, in regards to first choice of remote in-person or hybrid. Then uh, the staff, the FEA uh, sent out a survey to its members uh, for first choice. That survey was uh, sent to teachers, pairs, uh, custodians and clerical. So. Uh, four hundred sixty respondents um, completed that survey. Uh, and as you can see, the um. You know, the percentages, there's not a, a lot of difference, but you know, when you add the full um. You know, in person or partial in person, the numbers between what the parent uh, responses was and the. Uh, staff responses was with nearly identical, only a two percent difference of fifty-six percent. Of parents uh, supporting uh, either a uh, hybrid or in person and fifty-eight. Percent of staff supporting either a hybrid or in person.
Bob, this is Jim. I have a question. If you could go, when you said that the um, FEA sent out a survey, how many? Staff members responded to their survey?
That four hundred sixty.
And, and how many total staff are there in the district?
Uh, I think you have approximately about eight hundred total. That was not sent to, you know, the administrators or food service. Uh, workers um, or individual, people under individual contracts such as school principals or central office.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Okay, so going back to what the th- the three options that we were required to look at. Uh, and in no particular order. One was a full in-person return to school. Based on uh, the facility logistics with the six feet of physical distancing. Um, that option uh, has been ruled out for right now. Um, so really that left us to look at the hybrid uh, or proposed hybrid return to school. Combination which includes um, in-school and remote learning. And lastly, the remote learning option uh, where students learn from home. So the options that uh, we looked much closer at were the hybrid. And really the, the version that we looked at and have had conversations with internally and have had conversations. Um, with our unions and again, uh, those conversations are still underway and negotiations are still underway. So. Again, as a, as a caveat disclaimer, uh, these are proposed uh, plans, options. Um, and um, we'll shortly go into some of the details. But the hybrid plan that we propose um. Incorporates a gradual return of staff and students to our buildings. And then the full remote model. Um, we're in a much better position now as a district. To provide Chromebooks to a hundred percent of our students and internet access. And, and I should say before we go to the next slide, because it was a question raised by some of the uh, parents during the public comment. Portion was that the parents um, and students have a choice to start. Uh, and remain in a remote uh, model um, as long as they, they feel comfortable doing that. Um, I know there were some parents who mentioned some health uh, situations of family members. And that they, their preference was even if we did have a hybrid, that students could remain in full remote mode. And that uh, option will be available. So with that, as an introduction, I'm going to turn the. The mic over to John Thompson, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Bob. Um, so I'm going to talk a little bit about our hybrid approach and a remote learning approach. Um, first, I want to kind of start off by uh, going over what the first few weeks of school look like for staff and students. Uh, so for staff, uh, we'll be getting, we'll be getting with ten days of professional development. Beginning on um, August twenty-sixth and ending on uh, September eleventh. Uh, during those days, staff will be uh, participating in virtual professional development around um. The s- the health and safety aspects of um, returning to school in addition to social emotional learning. Um, and preparing for remote learning. Um, thinking about our, our staff and students that return to school, the first day of school will be on Monday, September fourteenth. Um, and during the first two weeks of school from uh, Monday, September fourteenth to Friday, September twenty-fifth. All students pre K to twelve will be uh, uh, remote. So the school year uh, will start off completely remote for the first two weeks of school. From September fourteenth to uh, Friday, September twenty-fifth. Uh, during that, those first two weeks, teachers will be going over expectations. Uh, they'll be going over their supplies, their technology. They'll be building relationships with students. Um, we hope to offer, um, if possible, some drive-throughs like we did in the spring. For students to uh, pick up supplies and possibly um, meet, do some meet and greet with their uh, teachers. In addition to the um, their other um, students in their classroom. So that's for the first two weeks. Then beginning on September twenty-eighth to October ninth. Uh, we then would like to begin uh, bringing small cohorts of students back into the building. Uh, we'll first begin with Cohort C, which is student, which are students in our self-contained special education classrooms. Um, they'll be coming back into the building um, for the morning for four hours of learning. Um, and they'll be receiving um, their classroom instruction in addition to OT, PT and speech services. In addition to the special education self-contained students, we also would like to bring back our English learners. For levels one and two. So those students who are really starting to learn English, we'd like to bring them back for two weeks. Um, while we bring those two, uh, while we bring those students back in for two weeks, the remainder of students um, in Pittsburgh will also be. Um, still doing remote learning during that time. Then beginning on um, Thursday, that following week on Thursday, October fifteenth. We hope to begin bringing back our hy- um, students um, in a hybrid approach. If they select that approach for learning. So just trying to kind of explain um, what we're trying to do um, to begin the school year off. Uh, like we said, we want to give families choice. So families will have a choice of whether to uh, send their student back to school in a hybrid model. Or back to school um, in a full remote model. So for the families that choose to send their students back in a hybrid model. We'll be breaking those students into two cohorts, Cohort A or Cohort B. And those students, um, if you look at the uh, sample schedule we have in front of you. Cohort A will attend school in the morning in person on Monday and Tuesday. Then in the afternoon on Monday and Tuesday, um, they'll be in school, I'm sorry, for four hours. Then they'll go home. Um, they'll leave school with their lunch. And possibly their breakfast for the next day. And then when they go home, Cohort A will continue learning in the afternoon. During that time on Monday and Tuesday, teachers uh, will also uh, be able to connect with that Cohort B. That Cohort B will be learning for ho- from home on Monday and Tuesday. So those teachers will also be able to do some um. Remote learning, either synchronous or some self-directed instruction during that time. Um, so for Cohort B, those students will be learning from home on Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday. And they'll be coming in in person on Thursday and Friday. For four hours in the morning, just like Cohort A did on Monday and Tuesday. So for Cohort B, they'll be learning in person. Um, Monday, Thursday and Friday. Then they'll be um. Going home after their four hours of in-person instruction, they'll be going home with their lunch and breakfast for the next morning. And then they'll be at home in the afternoon, learning from home. And then Cohort A will have time to actually connect to their teachers. Um, in the afternoon on Thursday and Friday. On Wednesday, all students from Cohorts A and B will be learning from home on Wednesdays. So for Cohort C, Cohort C, remember is our high need students, our self-contained students. In addition to our EL levels one and two, we are offering them an in-person model on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. For four hours. So they'll be in school four days a week. On Wednesday, they'll be learning from home, complete home um, in, in school learning on Wednesdays. And then our last cohort, which is Cohort D, those families who choose not to send their students back to the co- um, in-person hybrid model. They'll be learning from home uh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday in a full uh, remote learning model.
John, when do you want to take?
John, when do you want to take questions?
I'll take questions now.
Alright, so just to help me understand, so cohort, let's say I'm in Cohort A.
Yep.
And I'm I'm going into the building on Monday and Tuesday and then I'm leaving at lunch.
Yep.
And what am I doing in the afternoon?
So in the afternoon, you'll be doing in the you'll be doing work independently. That reflects what you learn in the classroom on Monday and Tuesday.
So the so basically, it's not gonna be synchronous. Like, so if I'm in, if I'm a high school student and I'm taking chemistry. I'm not gonna be looking remotely at my teacher's class when they're teaching the class. If I'm not in the building.
If you may have a check-in in the afternoon with your teacher. But if it's not in the morning, depending on your schedule that day, you may be learning, you you may be doing some learning on your own that afternoon. The height, we're we're in the in the process of negotiating each individual schedule right now with the union and putting together those schedules. So we hope to have more information on exactly what the high school, the middle school and the elementary schedule will look like. But for now, this is kind of what we have right now, so each schedule will obviously depend on the level and what it looks like. I think Jeremy's proposal for the high school is that it will rotate. You'll have some classes that will meet synchronously during certain days of the week. And then other classes that will meet asynchronously in other days of the week, so it's like on a rotated rotation basis.
Because four hours wouldn't be enough to actually do what a student's schedule is scheduled for right now.
Right, so the students will have to do some follow-up work in the afternoon on their own. Either, you know, lecture, they have to, you know, do some work independently, but the teacher created, they may have to work in some groups. Do some group work in the afternoon. So it's all gonna depend on exactly the workload that the teacher gives to the students to work on in the afternoon.
Would it not be possible just to, like, do we not have the capability or webcams or whatever it would be? To say, even though I'm in Cohort B and I'm not in the building. I can still be signing on while Cohort A is in the building. And we can be a classroom, basically, right? We can, some of us would be sitting and some of us would be at home, but. I mean, I feel like that could maximize more. Like, especially as you're talking about older kids, I think this works really well for, I mean. This works really well, I mean, that's kind of a loaded statement, but it's for elementary and middle maybe. But when you're talking about high school and you're talking about, you know, dance placement classes and you're talking about a lot of electives. I'm curious how that could work and and so I'm just throwing that out there and might.
Yeah, so we we talked about that and I we're exploring that right now, so some of the issues that came around with that live streaming piece. Gene is around the students' rights and their and the policies around their their rights. We weren't sure whether or not if that would be possible to do. You know, if if something were to would to happen in the classroom and then there'll be a group of students at home. Or it could be parents at home with their student. They they could possibly witness something that, you know, unfortunately happened in the classroom. And we we didn't want to, you know, violate anyone's civil rights. So we're looking to see if that's possible.
To add to that, I think, I mean, we're definitely talking about it. But that could be, that might be a management nightmare for teachers too. So we're gonna be asking them to manage, you know, thirteen, fourteen kids in class. And then also manage the learning of kids that are home. So they're gonna have to be in front of that computer to do that and trying to meet the needs of the kids in the classroom. You know, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not the model to use, but I I think that's something we really need to talk with the the teachers about.
And then, this is a special ed question, so the, or it's not just special education, but that that at more at-risk population that you're bringing in there, Cohort C. So I'd like to know what student to teacher ratio we're talking about with these, with this cohort. And also, I mean, again, reality versus theory, right? Like, some of that population is a population that doesn't have really the ability, and maybe Rowan could speak to this. To keep social distance, right? You've got very high needs in some cases. Are we talking about students who might have to be physically kind of touched by with staff? Are we not talking about that? And how do we protect special education teachers who you know, who are gonna be exposed more, right? Because it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, it's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And with a population that may have a very difficult time maintaining those boundaries.
Rowan, do you wanna chime in here?
Well, I was gonna actually chime in. And she can chime in as well. I I think that, you know, those those student populations, there, yes, there are some students who do tend to be more physical and some students who don't. We will be probably needing to look at each individual class and determine whether or not they can, you know, they are smaller by number in nature of the classroom. But there might be, they might need to be separated even a little bit more, reduce their numbers a little bit more. And I believe Craig mentioned that there's additional P P E protective equipment available for those staff. So gowns, face shields with masks, those would all be available to that, those staff. And I think that the other part of that is that it really is gonna be working with each student individually based on their needs and the families of the students. I didn't know if you had anything else to add, Rowan?
Alyssa, I think some of the, what we've been doing is looking at those needs of those sub-separate classrooms. And I think one of our strategies, if if feasible, is actually cutting those rooms in half and dividing them into two classrooms. Example, a typical room for a sub-separate classroom, Gene, is twelve students. And a lot of those students have paraprofessionals. So what we're looking at is kind of separating those twelve into like six students in one class, six students in the other class. With the correct support in each classrooms. So we would kind of, we would try to, you know, divide them up into two classrooms to spread out those students because of of their needs.
This is Jim.
Sorry, Jim, so I just want to make sure people who are listening, this is a very important slide. Because I think the, a lot of the questions that we've received is, will there be either a hybrid or a remote model? And we're offering both. So we are offering families the choice to choose from a hybrid model for some in-school and out-of-school, and then we're offering a full remote model for families to choose from.
This is Jim, I have a couple of questions, John. So you're teaching Cohort A on Monday and Tuesday in the classroom. And your lesson plan covers topics A, B and C for them to to go over to learn. Then, does Cohort B then get taught those same lessons on Thursday and Friday?
Yes.
Okay. And then so the 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 you and the teacher are in essence teaching the same lesson plans twice. Because the class is split up.
Yep.
Then, how then, for those students who are all remote a hundred percent of the time. How how are we teaching that, those same lessons to them?
So, a couple of things, Jim. What we are proposing to do is, so we have pacing guides in the district. And what we're proposing to do is on Wednesdays, when we have that, where it says teacher prep, common planning time. We're hope, our plan is to gather all teachers in the district to actually do lesson plannings together. So for example, all grade two teachers, all grade three teachers. Working with our instructional coaches and our administration to actually plan lessons. So we're all kind of on the same page and staying on track. So that's that's one way, we're we're hoping to plan and move forward. So we hope this model, if we're all working together and planning together, this will help us all stay on the same track. And to make sure there's equitable education happening at all our schools throughout the districts.
So, if I can add, John, students who are all remote will actually follow the same schedule during the day. They'll just be at home. So they'll get the same lesson one and two on Monday and Tuesday. And they would have the same lessons as, let's say, Cohort A, Cohort A on Thursday and Friday, will just be remote. Does that, do you see what I'm saying? So it's very important to us that our remote schedule and our hybrid schedule are the same. Because our hybrid students, at any point during this year, might be forced to go remote.
Adam, can you just make up kids, alright, so?
So I I will, let's say, I'm gonna use Crocker Elementary, okay? So, let's say they start at eight thirty in the morning, they have a half hour morning meeting. So Cohort A would have morning meeting from eight thirty till nine. Cohort D would have morning meeting remotely from eight thirty to nine. Then they would start E L A from nine o'clock until about ten thirty. Cohort A would be in front of the teacher in the classroom with the remote, with the in-person model. Cohort D would have a very similar experience, except it would be remote. It would be on Google Meet.
So Cohort, Cohort D is getting the most?
They're not though, because they would actually have independent work on their Thursday and Friday, just like Cohort A would.
Okay.
So they may have some asynchronous times where where they might be provided some services that they may need, it would depend on each individual child. But it would be a very similar, so Cohort D and Cohort A would have a very similar experience Thursday and Friday.
I think it's brilliant.
So right now, and unfortunately, we don't have them ready for you. We do have schedules that we're negotiating with the teachers' union right now for our high school schedule, for our middle school schedule and an elementary schedule. We don't have exact examples, so when we do have those examples, we'll share them with you, but it does reflect this thinking that we're sharing with you right now.
Are we, how are you planning for specials? And, I mean, that's something we can't lose.
Yep, so, right now, Gene, for specials, in the elementary model. We have, will have specials built in during that four-hour time for the in-person students. So for the in-person students during the week, there'll be time for the, at the elementary level, that the specialist will actually go in the classroom. And then in the afternoon, for those cohorts that are completely at home, there'll also be a time for specialists to provide their services during during the afternoon time. For our high school, right now, our proposed schedule, not to get into, you know, it a lot. But right now, they're actually built in during that time of the day. So if you have, for example, you know, B period and that's your gym, you'll still have that built into your schedule. So you 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 still will be following that schedule for A and for middle school and high school.
This is Jim again, Adam, when you were talking about Cohort D would would be having the same experience on Monday and Tuesday as Cohort A is, you talked about setting up a Google Meet. So would they, would the Cohort D actually be listening to the teacher who's teaching the students in Cohort A?
So that's that's difficult to answer, because I think it depends on how many families choose the remote.
Okay.
If if we have enough families choose the remote option, they could have their own remote T. You know, I think we'll know that very soon. Jim, I think that's how it would work best, but.
Okay.
Thank you. On the next slide, I can talk a little bit about that, Jim, too. So, our, we have to look at some proposed times and one of the things we want to keep is that we want a hybrid schedule to reflect our remote schedule because of the nature of this year and what it could bring, we may need to switch back and forth to each model. So right now, we're proposing some school start times and end times based on four hours of the in-person model or the morning model, so right now. Our plan from seven thirty to eleven thirty, four hours, Long Jero Memorial and McKay will be following that schedule. From eight thirty to twelve thirty, Crocker, Ryanfold and South Street will be following that schedule for learning. And then from nine thirty to one thirty, Pittsburgh High School will be following that schedule for learning. Four hours of time, the reason why we have to have these different schedules is because of the tiered bus model that we have. Still have to have that tiered bus model, and with this type of schedule, it will still, we'll be able to offer transportation to all our students.
But then the expectation is in the afternoon, everybody's doing stuff online.
Yes, correct, Gene, yep.
And presumably, taking attendance and, I mean, I think that this was one of the biggest failures from the spring. And it's no fault of the school systems and the teachers. I think that the directive coming out of the state, and and I, you know, I had a couple of parents email me about this, and I think it's an important thing to understand. People were not happy with the spring and they said their children were disengaged and they weren't intellectually curious and and I, I mean, I have two children who went through that too and and I think that they maybe stayed a little bit more engaged, but like one parent wrote to me that her son finished all his work by Tuesday afternoon, and I have a daughter, a young, who was a freshman last year, similar thing, she's very good at that, she she just pushed it all out and did it all in two days. I think parents need to understand that that's not what this would look like.
No, absolutely not, Jean.
State, the state told systems in the spring that you really couldn't count this kind of stuff because it was an equity issue and, I mean, so I think parents need to get they need to understand that that was not because Pittsburgh didn't do remote learning well. That was because the whole state was given a directive that was a really poor directive in my
No, I agree with you, Jean, and I think, I think during the spring, it changed several times, I think it changed like three times, right? First, it was just to be enrichment, and then we moved to those standards or, lack of a better term, those power standards that we had to follow. You know, during that time, there was also a a statement that came out saying there's not gonna be any new learning happening, we're gonna just review, so that's not happening. We are now moving into another school year, attendance will be tracked and taken. You know, my proposal is that attendance is taken daily, each hour, each time a class changes. Attendance is taken, no matter if it's elementary, middle or high school. Attendance is gonna count, in addition to that, we also will be going back to grading, grades will count, it won't be credit or no credit anymore, Jean. It's actually gonna be a grade, going back to our grading system. So the stakes have changed and the expectations are now back to to what it was before around attendance and grading.
I note that the high schools are starting at nine thirty, and that is a question that came up that the those teenage years, that they need more sleep and and the nine thirty stop might, we might find that it is wonderful, a wonderful time. That we never would have tried it except for this, this emergency that's come up, so I'll be interested to see the effect of that.
So again, these are our proposed times. Once we agree with our our teachers' union, we'll be putting out schedules for each school based on these times. And what that exact schedule will look like for each school. Uh, we'll be putting out schedules for each school based on these times um and what that exact schedule will look like for each school. All right, next slide. So moving into kind of the next fades, phase of information that we need from our families. Um, we'll be sending out some uh, um, a form for families to fill out uh tomorrow. We need the following information so we can start planning um for our remote or hybrid models. So we're gonna be asking families to fill out information on their transportation choice for the fall. Um, in addition to writing down their students' names, all their students in the district. Um, and all the household contacts. Um, so again, if you have three students in the district at three different schools, we need to know their name and what schools they attend. Um, and then we need to know parents' uh preference for their students, whether it's going to be remote or hybrid. Um, because we need to start looking at our staff um and um whether or not we can look at our staff and have some staff be teaching completely remote. Um, stu- some staff teaching completely remote students and other staff teaching uh the, the students who are hybrid. So we need that information now. Uh, so we'll be sending a survey, a, a survey or a form out for parents to fill out. Um, if we don't get that information um from parents, we'll be calling parents uh one by one to find that information out. Uh, this is extremely important information that we need in order for us to plan uh the best reopening in the fall uh for our students. So we'll be uh sending that information out tomorrow.
Hey, John, thank you. Um, so just to try to bring our, the, the presentation portion of uh. The evening to a close. Uh, you know, we really wanna have, we wanna create a proposed committee um. To look at the, you know, the, the data and our reopening um plans, proposed plans. Uh, you know, logistic issues that come up. Uh, that group would consist of. Teachers, school committee, admin, parents, public health experts. We have Steve Curry and Pam Rivers on the phone. And also students. We wanna hear the student voice um as we make these decisions and hear from the students. What are their concerns? So we can uh appropriately address them. I think uh, you know, as I've heard from um during this presentation and comparing back to last spring. Uh, although the, the slinky slide that shows uh our flexibility and our nimbleness didn't, didn't make this presentation. Uh, you know, we're, we're an adaptive organization. All of us have had to adapt our routines since uh March thirteenth. Um, you know, we will continue to adapt. Um, make sure we educate, you know, our students, meet our students' staff and families' needs. So with that, uh, just bring uh the presentation to a close and. For those out um watching on FATV, uh, if you have questions, we want to hear from you. Uh, the best mechanism to do that is send your questions by email to F S questions. At fitchburg.k12 dot m a dot U S.
Um, before you close out, Superintendent, um, may I ask a question and it, and it stems from a phone conversations that I've had. Um, students, yes, may I go, go forward? Yeah, okay. Um, students that are in, in the middle of, of being tested, our parents want them tested for, you know, their, their precise. Condition or aptitude for learning. Um, is that component also in this plan that. They would have access to testing on a, a needy and timely basis?
That is part of the plan um that students, if there's a suspected disability or anything in that, of that nature, students will be tested. Um, you know, that, and we may need to bring them in additional days in order to get it done in a timely manner. Um, and I, the other thing that I wanna note that we are trying to put in place some um. Some areas where we can bring some students in who weren't able to get tested um during the March shutdown. Uh, hopefully, we'll be able to get that done within the next week or so.
Oh, that would be great because they're very anxious. Yes, about that. Thank you.
Um, I've got a question, which is, hi, it's Sally. I, okay. Um, so the question is, has there been any determination about the, the fate of MCAS? I know that they were suspended last year. I know that uh Michael Kishmerick has put forward a petition requesting the state abridge. Or, you know, cancel MCAS. Any conversation about that at this point?
Is happening at this uh, the state level.
Okay.
Sally, and I, I happen to see in today's uh Sentinel that that's something that the legislators are discussing. Um, that's, that's really I, out of our hands um at this point. Uh, but it is something that is being discussed at the state level.
Great, thank you.
Didn't I, didn't I see a, a five-year moratorium on it?
I think a request was four years. Um, yes.
Four? Okay, yeah.
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 That's a request right now, but there hasn't been.
Yeah. I, is that, is that coming from Desi?
The request is coming from, I think largely from the MTA at this point.
Oh, okay.
Um, is it okay to ask a few questions at this point? And I think Steve Curry is still on. Um, so. Yeah, and, and hi Pam, I haven't talked to you yet this year, but um, so, or this summer. Um, the. So I, I favor starting remote and um, and I think that your plan is doable. If all these other criteria are met. And I would want to have the school committee be able to meet. Before we would actually move into any hybrid situation to reevaluate what the conditions are for the virus. I mean, I read a report and Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I read a report today that said. Um, six thousand nine hundred and three children have tested um positive, have had. Tested positive for COVID in Massachusetts. Um, and I think, and that's in a, in an environment where. We, you know, kids have been in their, Tom used a great term, community pods. I, I would love to explore that more, Tom Hughes. Um, and not around a lot of older adults, right? Like presumably, they might be around a grandparent or they might be around. Um, obviously their parents, but we haven't put them into that milieu yet, right? And in schools where, and, and again, Georgia is a very different place than Massachusetts, so I get that. But, you know, you had positive cases immediately and the school had to close down. And I have yet to see the state or a public health entity tell us, here's the metric. That says it's not safe to keep a school open. So I, I'd love to hear what that is. And I also wondered, you know, we, we, we have a low incidence and, and you know, I, before I go any further, I just wanna say thank you. To you, Steve, and to the mayor and for the hard work we've done in the city, because that's a great member, right? We do have to consider though that teachers are coming in from other cities, other towns. Um, we're, we're also looking at, as far as I understand, we're not telling parents, hey, you need to keep your kids. Um, in a small pod when they're at home. And I don't think we could ever even do that. So I, I, I think it's a big experiment, obviously, to bring everybody back. And, and I'm a teacher. I know that we need to see kids. I know that, like, I need eyes on kids. I would love to see us embrace a, an outdoor model. And I'm not saying outdoor classes, but if, if we stay, if we are remote, you, John, you mentioned the meet and greets. I, I think we could do outdoor activities um at even a bigger scale, right? Like, and we could get that like social emotional connection for kids, cuz they really, I mean, I see it in my children. They need it. Um, and I think if we do go remote, as you're saying, right, you're saying we wouldn't be going back in the first groups, wouldn't be going back. Until the end of September. Um, and I do have concerns about the special education teachers in that situation. Um, but we should may, maybe make some plans to transport kids to Crocker Field or to Fitchburg State Field if you're at McKay. Or, you know, someplace where we could get them to do some kind of fun, social distant activities on a regular basis. Because they, they are gonna need that. Um, so Steve, I guess here's my question. Do you have a sense that, I mean, there are gonna be cases, right? Like, I would assume you're gonna admit, you're, you would say that, that we're gonna see cases in schools. Um, what is the metric that we live with and say? Okay, this doesn't have the potential. I mean, I don't know. Do you, do you know what I'm saying?
I, I think your concern is of an outbreak. I mean, if we see one case, we're definitely gonna con, contact trace. Um, we will work with uh appropriate staff uh to measure who could potentially, you know, classrooms. Uh, who could potentially be a contact.
How fast is that turnaround, Steve? Because in, in the situations that I've experienced this summer, it's taken seven days to get a test result. Um, from a kid that my kid was kinda hanging out with.
Yeah, that's, that's an important factor. And if folks use a local lab. Uh, the test has been much quicker, but if, if it's a national lab, it, it has been seven to ten days as of, as of recent times.
So I, I'm really concerned that we're, as local districts, that we're being put in this situation. Where we don't really have a testing protocol that is, that's.
I think the first call is, is everybody's being monitored for symptoms. So. We would implement quarantine immediately for someone that had symptoms. We would not wait for a test.
So on that, Steve, and this is a question for the school members of administration. Yeah, you would. And then what happens with that teacher and that classroom? Like, we. There are no substitutes that, where there have been many days where my children in the schools were sent to the cafeteria or sent. You know, to a learning lab or something because they didn't, their teacher wasn't in school and we didn't have subs. So like, what happens then? And what happens to the whole cohort theory? When you, and, and by the way, the um, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I am trying to say there's theory and there's practice, right? Like, the list that the state has told school systems that a child should stay home for or get checked out for. Is pretty extensive. It's basically a cold, right? Like, so you have sore throat, you have a fever, you have a um. You know, you have a cough, you have, I, like, I can't, I guess I'm just wondering. Theory versus practice. I'm gonna have a bunch of teachers who are trying to do the right thing and say, hey, I can't go into school today. What happens?
Well, from my end, I think I work with the, the appropriate staff. I mean, if, if, if there is an outbreak, we certainly look at. Um, partial closings, full closings, depending, depending on the numbers. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but there, there is the, the ability to uh separate within the building.
I, I think from a, from a district perspective, um, you know, we have uh guidelines and protocols that. Uh, Desi has put out to handle, you know, both students and staff. So with, you know, with students, we're required to have isolation rooms for, available at each school. So the uh protocols that are laid out there are, you know, are pretty straightforward. I think, you know, the, the question that maybe you're asking is, well, what happens if it hits a certain volume? Well, and if it hits a certain volume, whether it be at a school or as a district. Then, then we'd have, we may have to take action to go fully remote at, at the school or at the district. We are looking at the data uh for Fitchburg and Massachusetts on a daily basis. Um, so, you know, we're, we're constantly looking at it, you know, we'll, we'll see. As we have this uh gradual, call it soft reopening, where, you know, we bring the staff back first for the PD. And really, when you look at the proposed calendar, uh, we won't have any, you know, large number of students coming in. And even, you know, as we're talking about earlier, potentially, maybe it's half uh until the middle of October. Things could change between now and the middle of October.
Yeah.
And, 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 you know, and just if I, if I can just finish here, you know, one of the frustrating things, I think, for. Um, I'll say school districts across the country, uh, but I only speak for Fitchburg, is there is no um. Threshold, so to speak. So while I shared that five percentile recommendation from the World Health Organization. There is noth- nothing in Massachusetts. And um, the, the reality is Massachusetts is a local controlled state. So there are decisions made uh by each community based on the situation in, in each community. As there are, in a way, negotiations uh underway across the state with what type of reopening will happen. So um, every community is different.
So, okay, here are two things that I'd just like, and then I'll stop talking and um. But the, the, the governor has rolled us back from the newest phase, right? And so, and then, and the gathering limit is twenty-five. So I guess I, I'd love for somebody to try to explain that to me. How we're seeing that happen. And again, I get Fitchburg might be a little different, but I, I don't think once we put all these people together, it's. I think we're gonna see, we're gonna see infection. I, we're, we're just gonna. I, I, I mean, I, I think that's what we've seen in all these other schools. And, and that's um dangerous for some of our teaching population and for some of our families that the kids are going home to. But um, so I guess.
Yeah, so, so the thing, you know, as I, as I ended the presentation with tonight. Uh, I really wanna emphasize the fact that we're going to put together a committee to, that's comprised of a lot, variety of stakeholders. Including students, parents, school committee, teachers, administrators, health experts. You know, as Craig mentioned earlier, we're having uh, you know, engineers, GALE associates, evaluation of our heating system. Uh, we, we know people at the DPH who came in eleven years ago. They've completed reports uh for the district over the last year. And, and I should add, tho- those are proactive actions that we have been taking. Um, so, you know, clearly, this is a little bit different. And we, as we have been, we're going to be as transparent as possible and try to make this the best decisions based on the. Information and data of, of what's happening, whether it be school by school or as a district.
This is Jim Walsh. John, I had a question for you. I, I think on your beginning slide, you were talking about the um. Training and professional development, you use the term staff. And I'm assuming that the training isn't just limited to teachers and parents. The training will be involving everybody involved in the school, administrative staff. Principals, assistant principals, food services, et cetera, et cetera. So everybody's on the same page in terms of what. We want people to do and what shouldn't be done, correct?
Correct, yeah. So one of the big things uh that the state has made very clear to all the state, all the districts is that we need to do that health and safety protocol. For every person in the building. So that will be the um, the beginning few first days of us coming back. We'll be going over those protocols with every staff member, whether you're a teacher, a paraprofessional, um, a custodian, a clerical. Everyone will be getting that training.
Thank you. And just to comment, I, I know that um, I, I've heard the presentation tonight. We, I heard it at the July meeting. I watched one of the presentations that was presented to the community. I, I'm very confident in what. The administration has done and has prepared to, to take a cautious approach to the beginning of our school year. And, and I think that the plan that's being presented um i- is based on what. Not just the administration, but what we all know now. And it's been very clear in every presentation that I've, I've seen or um. Reports that when, when Superintendent Jokula did his uh presentation, I think it was last week, the three-minute presentation, that. That we're ready to make a change tomorrow if what. Changed from today. And, and, and it's my understanding that, that if need be, as he just said earlier tonight, it may be. A school that goes completely remote or the district goes completely remote. But I, I believe that. We're looking at a plan that's. Looking at and taking into consideration all of the possible. options or bumps in the road that that might happen. And I I I think that the approach that we're taking is cautious. For the majority of our student body, we're looking at four weeks of them beginning in remote learning, not till the, in essence, two months from now, i- is when, if things stay the way they are right now, the the a large group of our students who participate in the hybrid model would be going into the schools in the middle of October. And during that time, I know that that our administration will still be looking at and fine tuning the plans to make sure as we get closer and as things might change or stay the same, that there will be adjustments to what was presented tonight. So that that what we do in October will be the best possible option for our staff, for our teachers, for our students, for our families. And and I I think the one thing that that we have to consider is that once our students and staff aren't in the school, we have no control over what they do or where they go or who they see. And that that's something that that is the unknown for us when they come back to school on Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday or Friday. But I I I'm confident in what's been presented, that we're we're taking all the steps that we can take. I I do wish that we had more guidance from the governor, from Desi. I I I find it ironic that our governor is wanting to reduce the number of groups that can meet, yet he wants everybody to go back to school. And somehow, those two things just don't seem to balance out. And I'll I'll end there, but I'm I'm happy for what you presented. And I I believe we're 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 taking cautious steps and still looking out for the education of our students and the safety of everybody involved in the classroom. Thank you.
I uh, I concur with Mr. Walsh. I think administration has done an excellent job in providing what's going to be needed. All of you received many, many letters from teachers. And if I could just bear with me for a couple of minutes here. From the teachers, what they asked for, I will have the necessary PPE cleaning supplies to keep my students and myself safe. Back ventilation systems in our buildings are up to the necessary Mass State standard for reopening. Any state, the CDC benchmarks, guidelines are followed for any COVID-19. Protocols and procedures for return to remote learning are clearly defined when the situation arrives. I think administration has addressed all of those. So I support soft opening. By this fall.
I I think the one thing that's not clear is the is the last point, right? Like, that we understand at what point we would go remote. I I I can, I can support starting, obviously, I would support starting remote. And but I guess what I, just to clarify what Jim was saying, we we would revisit that decision as you are revisiting it with any new information that would be emerging from COVID cases. I think that gives us time to see what is actually happening as like some other schools kind of return. And I guess the other thing I just wanted to ask is where, you you mentioned that you're bringing staff back for professional development, so that means, I guess, in the building?
No.
Okay.
It will be.
Because I was gonna say, we are not meeting in person right now.
No, so we are, the first two days, we're giving staff, we're gonna allow the first two days for staff to actually be home virtually to do professional development. And then the other option, when we move into the next two weeks, the eight, the other eight days, staff will have the option of coming into the building and doing professional development in the building from their classroom.
What do we need again in person? When are, when is the city planning to have the school committee or the city council meet in person again?
I have no problem holding a meeting at Memorial, there's plenty of room in the library for a social distance thing and meetings.
I have a question, Superintendent Jockla, this this group that you of people that have a stake, how soon can that group be formed and meet? Like, it sounds like it would be good right at the beginning and just week by week for for, you know.
Yeah, I would like to have, I would like to have a group formed by the end of this week.
Yeah.
You know, in requests from some students, some parents, a parent, and also a school committee member. So I've already had some people express interest following my Thursday night update to the community.
That sounds great. And I, from my input, I'm very proud of you all, the administration tonight, because I think that our decisions, I I have the feeling they're coming from Pittsburgh. They're coming from, it's our task and we're we're tackling it. We're not just sitting and waiting to be told what to do from people above us. And we're we're willing to do our work and we're willing to ask for help above. So I I'm I'm very happy with everything, excited, actually.
Thank you.
This is Jim, do do we need a motion to approve the plan that that you presented tonight? Is that the next step?
It's within the agenda.
Okay.
So may I may I make just one, maybe typographical or request one word be inserted into the motion 2013-15 before it says final district reopening plan, if it can say the Pittsburgh Public Schools proposed final district reopening plan. Again, to reflect the fact that we are still in ongoing negotiations and you know, final is not final, I guess.
What do you want to change until?
So I I just want to insert the word proposed before the, it says the final district reopening plan.
So Bob, what they're what they're voting on tonight would be the hybrid approach that we presented with the soft reopening?
Correct, starting out with a remote learning and gradual phase in to a hybrid model. And again, the the review of this, whether it be on a weekly basis with this reopening team or on a daily basis by school leadership and in consultation with either local experts or, you know, state authorities. We will, we will make the decisions in the in this out of concern for the health and safety of our staff, students, and their families. So if if the numbers were to spike, and again, although there is no formal metric, but let's just use that 5% as a hypothetical bar, we would go fully remote. And we would have the infrastructure in place to accommodate the remote learning. Unlike in the beginning of a remote learning last year, you know, frankly, whether it's Pittsburgh or any school district in the state or across the country, districts scrambled and we learned a lot, we're in a much better position. And as part of our hybrid, remote is a part of our hybrid. So just to to repeat, because it was asked in the, you know, public comments section, parents can elect the remote learning only option for the, you know, for the foreseeable future.
I'll make the motion that we insert the word proposal.
Wait, wait, be before the motion, please. Bob, I don't know if I'd be comfortable at 5%, so I guess we're not, that's not a part of all of this plan, right? Like, so I think that would be just that we would be, it would be a debate or it would be, we would revisit this. But are we having to agree with this proposal right now that we wouldn't reconsider this until it got to 5%?
No, you're you're you're, no. So again, there, to be clear, there there is no state benchmark. But that's that's one that the World Health Organization has put out. And again, just looking at the information I shared with you from the Commonwealth of Mass, the, you know, the infection rates and comparing it to across the country, what states were below that 5% threshold. So again, it's for illustrative purposes only.
I made my motion to insert the word proposal.
Second.
Motion made and second. We'll have a roll call vote, Ms. Greenlee's.
Yes, sir, Mayor Dean Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
Unanimous, we are.
Thank you. Superintendent, you want to move into the action items?
So then, I guess now that the word proposed has been inserted, yep, there, we've already, the school board has already voted on the calendar.
Right.
So then the other two action items would be to accept the $1,000 donation for the Jumbotron for the Goodrich Academy graduation. And then to vote on the 2013-15 as just amended.
Right. So let's take up the Jumbo 20-13-14. Motion to accept.
Second.
To accept.
Okay. Ms. Greenlee, some roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir, Mayor Dean Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Quick, this, we're voting on the donation right now?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Post, post graduation.
Yes, Ms. Ms. Cragan. Ms. Cragan? Yes?
Oh, yes, sorry, yes.
No problem. Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yes, and thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
We are unanimous.
Thank you. Now 20-1315. Approved the superintendent's recommendation to submit Pittsburgh Public Schools' proposed final district reopening plan to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Greenlee's, a roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir, Mayor Dean Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Mrs. La-
Yes, thank you.
Is that a yes?
I think, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
Thank you, we are unanimous.
Thank you. Is there a need for executive session, Mr. Superintendent?
Uh, no, there is, there is no need for executive session this evening. No.
Thank you, thank you to all the staff. I think you did an outstanding job in putting this all together and it's good to see us moving forward. So I hear a motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and second to adjourn, Ms. Greenlee's roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor Dean Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
We are unanimous to adjourn.
Good night, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Good night, thanks, everybody.